...on the website with the answer. That makes it possible for us to just make sure that you get an accurate answer to your question. During public comments, applause or cheers or anything else is not allowed because we're respectfully listening to everyone. Thank you. Right? Anyone who wishes to speak?
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Laura Lavassi. I'm standing here in front of you after several months of taking a seat and hoping that maybe somebody would wake up. But as I stand here in complete shock and disdain for the Central, Wapatchoo Central School District, once again, I received an email a couple of weeks ago from the district completely show-harming a line to the parents about our district to have their children take the New York State--
Excuse me, is this an item on the agenda?
I don't know. But I pay taxes here and it shouldn't be on the agenda because I'm a parent and this is a grave concern to me and a lot of people here. So I get three minutes. I go up here and let you hear what I have to say and then I'll be out of your hair. I've taken months away from this because nobody listens.
Okay, ma'am. Yeah, there's a time at the end of the agenda and we have a fairly short agenda tonight, so it wouldn't be that long away. And at that time, you're welcome to speak on any subject you'd like.
But I have two things that I'd like to discuss--
Okay, but is it about the--
--to bring them up.
Well, if it's about the agenda, you may speak before the meeting--
I don't know what's on your agenda. There's a bunch of line items here, to be honest with you.
Okay, and perhaps you could ask the district clerk what your topic is and she'd be able to tell you if it's on the agenda, right? I'll be back. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else who has something that is on the agenda they would like to speak about now? Anyone? Okay. All right, in that case, this is now time for board comments. We started on this side last time, so we'll start here this time. Mrs. Lavass?
I was hoping that we could observe a moment of silence for the proposal of the Justice of the Supreme Court, Antonin Scalia.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Lavass?
Yes, a statement I'd like to read for your agreement. With regard to the resolution introduced by trustee Kelton and approved by this board at the most recent previous board meeting on February 25th, 2016. The resolution states that the Board of Education of the Wapatchoo Central School District believes it to be their fiduciary responsibility to both execute state educational directives and convey community positions on such directives. Look, the Boards of Education are not charged with executing state education-- --implementing education appropriate for the students in their charge and the fiduciary responsibility of the locally elected school board is to the local electorate who entrusts them with the oversight of the administrative endeavor. The resolution purports to represent community positions and yet the errant resolution excluded from the published agenda. There was no urgency regarding this resolution. There was no reason this resolution could or should not have been available for public review and consideration and common before it was voted on in haste by a board which has heard consistent public dissent regarding the content of the resolution and to which I was personally elected by a majority of the Board of its community on a platform which stands in direct contrast to the representations made on behalf of the community in the resolution. In this resolution, the majority of the board members of the Wapatchoo Central School District do not convey community positions on such state education directives, but rather convey under disregard for the concerns of a very significant portion of the community they are fiduciarily obliged to represent. The actions of this board consistently display a lack of regard and apparent disdain for the community concerns as well as a blatant disregard for the objectives of open meetings regulations and public access to the decision-making process. They regularly suppress public discourse via agenda setting via by limiting public comments since the beginning of the board meetings to agenda items only and then refusing to put the items of significant public concern onto the agenda. The actions of this board which take place in the public forum very much appear as a thinly veiled rubber stamping of decisions inappropriately made outside of the public view and consideration. I call upon this board to rescind the previously approved resolution and to act in accordance with the genuine fiduciary responsibility of the elected positions and in accordance with New York State open meetings law in all future endeavors which comprise of representing and acting upon the actual concerns of all of their constituents with appropriate disclosure.
Anything else? Mr. Selma? Mr. Lumia?
I was not going to read this, but I'll read unresponsive to some extent. The last board meeting resolution, not 1003, was passed, no extension. Please see the website for the actual resolution passed and don't rely on social media for accurate information. Moreover--
Mr. Lumia, perhaps Mr. Locima could put up the resolution. We don't have it on the website. All right, thank you. I thought of my clarifying piece so people would know what we're talking about. In that case, everyone, it's on the first page of the website, the school district website, so you can all read what it is at home. Selma, thank you. Mr. Lumia, will you continue?
Moreover, as stated, it shall only occur when of a conflict of interest in any communication in newspapers or posting on Facebook. It is a responsibility of trustees to state that what is said is their personal view and not the view of the board. Of greater importance is that the information provided by public trustees is accurate. Each trustee, as I did, had the opportunity to step up to the plate and add amendments to the resolution, not 103. It is unfortunate that no other trustee chose to amend amendments which express additional concern by members of our community so that the resolution sent to the governor and our state legislature could possibly have had an unanimous vote. Now, on a positive note, I'd like to congratulate the John Jay Girls Basketball Team for their victory over Scarsdale. They will not compete at Westchester County Center and hope to become champions. Congratulations to the Wapatchoo Lavassi Gymnastics to take the first place in the Divisional Championships. Congratulations to the Wapatchoo Boys Swimming Team for their second consecutive conference title. They were led by two first places by Jonathan Nunes and Thomas McCaffrey. Congratulations to eight John Jay students who will display their Art Gallery 66 in New York. There are Alex Lethery, Anne DeFele, Claire Wu, Karla Vahpand, Crystal Wu, Elaine Nichols, Anna Whitehead, and Kaylee Hessler. And congratulations to Joe Torres, Naraya Price, Jenna Grunfoltz, Dylan Ravich, Amir Kilmeier, Diana Fabrizio, and Kelly Dillon, all RCK students, for the excellent results of the FPLA competition. A special congratulations is to be given to a student at John Jay High School for winning his 162nd wrestling match. His name is-- now, my God, I can't believe I forgot his name-- Randy, Randy Earl, of course, for winning the Central Championships in wrestling. He will compete this kind of weekend at the state championship. Good luck. So I'd like to congratulate all the coaches and teachers who helped our students in their success. That's it.
Mrs. Karath?
John, John, such a thing.
Mr. Lumia covered the congratulations that I was going to add.
That's--
Mr. Ruden?
I wanted to just mention that I had the opportunity, as our representative, to attend the Boston Duchess County Police Board Meeting over these past few weeks. I would like to congratulate the John Jay High School Future Business Leaders of America for holding a, what I would consider, a successful blood drive. I donated there and I think they collected over eighty dollars. Someone calls it fifty pints of blood, which is well needed by this community, so congratulations to that. I also have the opportunity to attend John Jay's-- there were two shows, one named The Talent Show, which was a fabulous show, and the Spanish Honor Society where they had displays of various different Spanish-speaking countries, some food there, and kudos to all those students there. They did a wonderful, wonderful job. So to the students and to the teachers, they're thanking--
Mr. Lumia?
There are two other things that I felt today. One has to do with the superintendent, Kristen Crandall. I'd like to thank them for meeting with Assembly Barrett to discuss the current state of the Wapatchoo Central School District. Assembly Barrett is very receptive to our concerns related to unfundamental mandates, number thirty-two, thirty-twelve C and thirty-twelve D, English as a new language for students, guidance councils, K-12, and carbon monoxide detention, to name a few, as well as legislative tax cap and fairness. Apparently, hopefully, the superintendent, Kristen Crandall, will be invited to a forum that will take place in the near future. And last, but not least, which is probably the most important thing, I would like to remind all those who like Italian food that this Friday, RCK, between six and nine, the Italian Honor Society will host their third annual Buon Appetito night. I highly recommend it. Thank you, I'm sorry for the forgettable things.
No, thank you. You covered everything I was going to say too, Mr. Lumia. Excellent, thank you. All right, the next item is the superintendent's report. Mr. Carrion?
Good evening. Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education, members of the community. As I always say, today, depends who you speak with, yes, some folks say that today is the 100th day of school, others will tell you that this past Friday was the 100th day of school. But for all the seniors out there, you're getting closer and closer to graduation. I like to take these moments because this is what we do. We're here for students and the fact that you're sitting here and making sure you're getting your signatures, getting closer to walking that stage, continue to be responsible, do the best that you can, and truly, truly enjoy this last part of your senior year, this last chapter of your high school career. So congratulations. One more thing, the-- just wanted to share that we will be publishing our first edition of what we call the focus for the Wapatchoo Central School District. We are super excited about it. Assistant Superintendent Locima and certain members of the staff, as well as myself, we met to really finalize what the approach we're going to take and hopefully it'll be-- not hopefully, we're very confident that it's going to be a great way to continue to expand our communication to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to pull something from the consent agenda? In that case, Mr. Ruden?
May I have this one?
Yes, as well as this. As well.
Which one?
It's addendum to--
Which number?
Sir, the six--
Point zero three?
Six point zero three.
So we have two ones. Pardon me, most. Result that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated: six point zero two, six point zero three as amended, six point zero four, six point zero five, six point zero six, six point zero seven, six point zero eight as amended, six point zero nine, six point one zero, six point one one, and six point one two.
Could we have a motion? Mr. Lumia and a second, Mr. Selma. Excuse me, if you couldn't hear that, I'll repeat it. Mr. Lumia moved and Mr. Selma seconded. Yes, Mrs. Karath?
No, because it's six point-- it's that-- the addendum is at six point oh--
Eight.
You can restate it again?
Yeah.
And instead of putting the addendum to six point oh eight, it's to six point oh two? Because six point oh eight is the appointment and this is the actual compensation.
So I don't really--
No, six point oh two.
Okay, we have to make a slight modification of that, so we can restate it again. Mr. Ruden?
So, result that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated: six point zero two, six point zero three as amended, six point zero four, six point zero five, six point zero six, six point zero seven, six point zero eight, six point zero nine, six point one zero, six point one one, and six point one two.
Six point zero two as amended.
Let me repeat that. Six-- Result that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated: six point zero two as amended, six point zero three, six point zero four, six point zero two as amended, six point zero three as amended, six point zero four, six point zero five, six point zero six, six point zero seven, six point zero eight, six point zero nine, six point one zero, six point one one, six point one two.
Thank you. May I have a motion? Mr. Lumia moves, Mr. Selma seconds. Are all those in favor? Unanimous. Seven point zero one, approval of modified amount to be deposited into the repair reserve fund.
This is seven point zero one. Whereas on November 23rd, 2015, the Board of Education of the Wapatchoo Central School District authorized the establishment of a repair, excuse me, repair reserve for the purpose of funding repairs to capital improvements and equipment that do not recur annually or in shorter intervals in the amount of $1,614,155 to be appropriated from the 2015-2016 fund balance, subject to approval of the district voters at the 2016 annual meeting-- annual meeting and election. And-- And whereas the Board of Education of the Wapatchoo Central School District desires to modify the amount, it will ask the district voters to approve to be deposited into the repair reserve fund as a result of pending projects, parentheses, evidence, roof replacement, mandated carbon monoxide detection district-wide, and Wapatchoo's Junior High School auditorium tile replacement, and, parentheses, that will require-- that will require to be paid out of the 2015-2016 fund balance. Now therefore being further resolved that the Board of Education of the Wapatchoo Central School District modifies the amount to be deposited into the repair reserve fund from the 2015-2016 school year general fund balance-- in school fund balance to the amount to receive $329,075, subject to approval of the district voters at the 2016 annual meeting and election.
Could we have a motion? Mr. Lumia, second, Mr. Selma, discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Seven point zero two, approval, Wapatchoo's Junior High School asbestos abatement project secret type two, action. May I have a motion and a second regarding the approval of the Wapatchoo's Junior High School asbestos abatement project secret type two? Action as stated in item seven point zero two on the agenda. Okay, motion? Mr. Lumia, second, Mrs. Karath, discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Item seven point zero three, may I have a motion and a second regarding the approval of Wapatchoo's Junior High School asbestos abatement project at an estimated maximum cost not to exceed $65,000, which will be funded from the district's 215, 216--
Two thousand fifteen.
Oh, sorry. Oh dear. 2015, 2016, undesignated and unappropriated fund balance as stated in item seven point zero three on the agenda. Do we have a motion? Mr. Ruden and a second, Mr. Selma, discussion. All those in favor? Unanimous. Eight point zero one, board members may request additional agenda items, discussion items, or requests for information. Do we have any requests for additions to the agenda? Seeing none, it's now time for further communications from the public and so at this time, anyone who wishes to speak on non-agenda items may come up and speak related to district operations. Yes, and this is three-minute rule applies. So would you like to speak now? Oh, he just said-- he just said-- he just said related to district operations, so yeah. Oh, yes, certainly. Certainly. I think he was just clarifying that, you know, we didn't want someone to come up and say they think it's going to snow, you know? I think that's basically what he was referring to.
That's exactly it.
Well, you know who I am, because I told you that before. Most of you know me anyway. I'm here because I received an email a couple of weeks ago with regards to New York State assessments for test grades three through eight. It states that the tests have been reevaluated and test questions have been decreased along with no time limit to the test. Well, thinking two tests-- two questions taken off each test is substantial or considered a reevaluation, then you and the state are off of your rocker more than I originally thought. No, I won't be stopped again. I don't--
I'm sorry, ma'am, but, you know, whatever our opinions about--
Right, I'm getting there. I'm getting there. My opinion matters too.
Yes, certainly it matters, but we're trying not to be derogatory--
Oh, there's nothing--
You know, negative comments about individuals either--
Oh, I didn't mention anybody. No, this-- I--
I understand. Okay, I'm just telling you, this is what the lawyers tell us we have to say.
This political correctness is destroying our country, okay? I did not derogate or say anything towards anybody specifically and--
Excuse me, but the audience is not to cheer or applaud for anybody or boo them. This lady is speaking and if you want to say something when she's finished, you'll have that opportunity also. Thank you. Yes, excuse me. Okay, you may start over. We'll give you a full three minutes. Go ahead.
Well, it seems like I'm the only one that has anything to say this evening and I keep getting cut off, so now I'm going to go find where I was. Okay. With regards to the reevaluation, it was mentioned that there's not going to be any time limit to these tests at this point to make it-- to make part of that reevaluation revamping happen. Giving these children endless amounts of time with these tests in front of them is not a fix. It's only going to make it worse. If you recall, two-- it was approximately two years ago, we had the-- maybe it was even three-- with the issue with the sit and stare. This is worse than sit and stare. This is sit and choke on these tests, children. Do you understand what a child has to sit and go through? Do we forget about the children with anxiety? Do we forget about the children that were not allowed to use the facility because they had to take these tests? They weren't allowed to leave the testing rooms. Now there's an inordinate amount of time to get these tests complete. What is it going to do? What about the children that were stabbing themselves with pencils over the stress of taking these tests? What happens to them now that there's no time limit? We are creating a society of children with inordinate amount of disabilities at this point in time and ailments. I work in the mental port of things. I see what comes into our offices and it's a sad, sad thing. Yeah, I've been interrupted so many times, I didn't even get to read what the heck I wrote here. Well, I don't have to actually read it to you, it's been given to you. So I'll jump to the second portion of what I found to be very interesting. This weekend I came across a program with regards to phobias. They're explaining how the brain works and there's a phobia with a fear of something-- something, it could be anything, whether it be elevators or heights or spiders. The front portion of the brain shuts down and the back portion of the brain goes on overload, so it lights up like a Christmas tree, if you will. It was explained that the critical thinking part of the brain goes on overload while the logical and problem-solving part of the brain is shut down. Ironic how Common Core wants the children to critically think--